Good evening, welcome to the regular planning commission meeting. Grand Lake Township. Today is August.
Yes.
Please rise and join us in blood to lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The planning commission, I believe that we have presence this evening. We have Mr. Bush, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gillman, Mr. Van Der Skie. We have our planning consultants, Jill Bame and Maddy.
Wojciechowski.
W.
First item on our agenda would be approval of the meeting. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Does Chairman I make a motion that we approve the agenda as stated?
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Van Der Skie to approve the agenda as presented, supported by Mr. Anderson. I will in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item to approve the minutes for the regular meeting in July.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the draft of the meeting minutes for July 8th, 2021, and found everything to be in order, and therefore I make a motion to approve unless some of the commissioners have a comment.
I'll support that.
Motion by Mr. Van Der Skie, supported by Mr. Bush to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes in July 21. I will in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment, which is why many of you are here today. Just wanted to make it clear that I'm guessing most of you are here for what I call the offer of property, the seven and eight element, on this road. That is not on today's agenda. The reason is, we did not receive the information from the applicant that we requested. So, the next earliest opportunity that we would hear that would be the first Thursday in September. It all depends on when they get the information to us. The agenda is put together typically about a week or so in advance of the meeting.
That one will be the public hearing that would be noticed 15 days prior.
So, in that case, the applicant has to have at the end at least 15 days.
Oh, then I have to ask you something.
Repeat what Joe said.
So, there's a, there's a, it sounds like the notice will be sent 15 days in advance. That probably has to have there in the last 15 minutes. Whatever you do, you already have in September, at all the time. It's based on the time we're sending it.
We're already in August, so we're talking October.
So, notice will be sent out to the residents.
October at the earliest.
We are able to make a public comment in our three minutes on anything, is that correct?
Yeah. So, we're gonna do that in a orderly manner here for anyone who would like to do that.
What are you waiting to hear about?
There's a number of things. We asked for traffic study.
Well, I can start with the, 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 as well.
Jill Bame, planning consultant for the township. So, when we have land use cases like this, projects that come through, we look to see whether they are permitted in the ordinance. And currently, the properties are zoned, single-family residential. When we are presented with a rezoning application, we have a number of things that we look at, a number of factors. One of those is whether it is compatible with the community's future land use map. As you know, over the last several months, the township's been re-looking at the future land use map directed by the township board to do that, and there's specific areas, several areas in the township in which the land use designations have been modified from when the planning commission was looking at it at the end of last year. As part of that process, the master plan is currently out for its review period. There's a 42-day review period from our last meeting that we had in July. So, the current land use map doesn't necessarily, it shows those areas as being residential, single-family residential. The proposed future land use map would show that area designated as multiple-family residential. Either way, a rezoning is required because the current zoning designation is single-family residential. Part of that rezoning application process includes a traffic study. It includes some substantial information from the property owner that would help the township board and the planning commission assess the project with respect to the criteria that are spelled out in the zoning ordinance. And those are in, I believe, chapter seven, and I don't have the citation number handy, but I will get that in a second. And that way, we can talk about what the criteria are by which the planning commission would make a recommendation to the township board, and then the township board makes the final action on whether the rezoning is, takes place or not. That's the rezoning portion, and then their site plan review, which is a separate process, and that follows the rezoning application. Does that make sense? Okay. Sure.
Can somebody ask a question?
Let's do this all, let's do this all in comment. This is gonna get out of hand.
Normally, what we do is everyone is allowed free initiative to address the planning commission, whatever it asks. Just, we don't want this to kind of take a couple hours. This is part of the, uh... Well, and I guess I would just add...
There's a question about what you just said.
Yeah, there's a question about what I just said with that, but we should keep in mind that this item is not actually on the agenda. No one here from the petitioner to answer any questions. There's very little that the planning commission will be able to answer. I think it's probably good for people to make their public comments and note those, and then at a following meeting, those will probably be addressed. We can share the comments with the applicant as well.
They're welcome to come back.
Absolutely. Yes.
And here, we have a candidate to prepare his...
Wait till public comment's over tonight, if there's some general questions that everybody seems to be asking, answer those all at one time after public comment.
Yeah. You can see it. We don't have that, actually.
I had none of my information from last week.
They have to reply without knowing who they are.
No, they haven't applied yet.
But you know they're applying.
So, we assume.
Someone has applied for a rezoning.
Somebody's applied.
Who applied for the rezoning?
Some of this information can't...
It's information that I think is... Okay, that's, like, this is the point. We're residents of the community, and we are entitled to know.
We're not hiding it.
Yeah.
We're not hiding it.
But it sounds like you are.
We're on the website. We, we, hang on. I got a comment.
We need to control.
Okay.
We're all getting an opportunity to make decisions and address the planning commission minutes. Here, there was a very brief presentation at a previous meeting that showed us what the class they wanted to present. The application.
Tell them what they needed. May I speak real quick before I go to public comment? Just because...
Green Investments. Can I have my three minutes?
Let's start.
We're gonna go in order here. Okay, go down the line.
The minute from the last meeting, we just heard they will approve the pardon, the package, and you'd like to have information about who presented and what was presented, that's from the meeting of July 8th. And I believe that are, that's really all the questions that the planning commission is able to answer because there's not an application for them. It's not an item on the agenda. However, we understand that people are concerned, and so if you'd like your three minutes to provide your thoughts and comments, that's what it's here for.
Absolutely. And don't get us wrong, planning commission, you're called to comment.
Absolutely.
Everybody helps us to make decisions. So, we're gonna start on mine left. Is there anyone in the front row that would like to address the planning commission? Would you like to, you just want the microphone state your name and address? Anybody in the front row? Second row? There we go.
This is a point of order. I was at a meeting of the zoning board a couple weeks ago with my wife. I think it's Green Investments, and they were asking for a variance.
Excuse me, please talk to the commission.
Okay. There was, there was, there was a variance requ...
Name and address first.
Okay. I'll read my statement. Good evening, I'm Tom Reynolds, here with my wife, Pat. 5260 McCandish Road, directly across from the former clubhouse of Genesee Hills Golf Course, where we have lived for 36 years. Pat and I read your impressive and lengthy master plan for Grand Lake Township, which says the property in discussion this evening is zoned, low-density, single-family residential on the 2021 future land use map on page 96 of the master plan, which is this. Four families purchased property on the former golf course and have built beautiful, costly homes. One of those families includes Jay Hoffman, who served the Grand Lake community for 15 years on this planning commission, and was the first to build his beautiful home on one of those parcels. In speaking with Jay and other families on McCandish Road and in the immediate area, they have all opposed, are all opposed to the idea of multifamily development on this McCandish Road site. The proposed 79 units would mean hundreds of additional residents with hundreds of vehicles on just seven acres with an 18-foot variance from the road to the buildings. This would be inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood and would create an unreasonable amount of traffic on an already very busy McCandish Road. The new Kroger gas station at the corner of McCandish and South Saginaw will contribute to even more traffic congestion. We humbly ask that you reject this proposal for rezoning to multifamily residential and keep single-family residential in this important area of Grand Lake Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the, in the second row on the left side of my left? Right? Would like to address the planning commission? Let's go back a row to the third row.
I'm Lorraine Wilson. I have lived in, off McCandish Road for almost, excuse me, 56 years. When we moved out there, Devonshire, we were the only subdivision between that two-mile stretch from Saginaw to Vassar Road. It was a dirt road.
Would you please state your address? Pardon? Would you please state your address?
Oh, 8331 Manchester Drive is my official address right now.
Thank you.
And when we moved there, it was a dirt road. We, mud days. We saw the paved road, McCandish to Vassar, Vassar to Perry Road. The traffic became so heavy that sometimes in the last few years, we've had to wait for seven, eight, nine cars to make a right-hand turn on the McCandish. And then you get up to Saginaw Street, and you might have 10 or 12 cars waiting to turn on that light. I don't know what the people who make a left-hand turn on the Man, McCandish Road would do because we had to wait that much with a right-hand turn. So, I'm very, very concerned about having more traffic trying to get on, off McCandish Road from that subdivision and making a turn up to that traffic light. Because it's, and then we, more development coming in on Leach Lane, they're going to planning a vineyard, started a vineyard, you're going to have more traffic trying to come off Leach Lane on to Saginaw Street. So, to me, it just seems like absolute unnecessary because we have, it's already zoned for, and as the previous speaker said, it's already zoned for single-family, and we built there as a single, single-family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, for your comments. Anyone else in that third row? Sure. We skip by you, I guess.
John Ziska, 5415 McCandish Road, Grand Lake. I'm one of the new houses that was built about a year and a half ago on that property. Last meeting that we had, that gentleman was at, we got to talking to the two builders that are proposing to build these, and I mentioned to him what line of work I meant, and then he tried to, tried to get me involved, and I said, he said, "We build these things, it's a good look," and I think somebody on the board last week, or July 8th or whatever, mentioned, "Oh, it's a beautiful facility." But I told him, I said, "Listen." He says, "They build them in Royal Oak, all these places." I said, "But buildings like this, unique looking, it's not bad looking, but they're built for downtown areas where you come out, you walk around downtown, you go to Little Joe's, you go to Aubrey's, go wherever you want to go. This kind of a development does not belong on a residential street." And it's tough because the guys, or let's say the group of doctors that bought them originally, was talked into buying that clubhouse for a facility to turn into a banquet hall. There's a beautiful orchard behind or a vineyard, take pictures of the bride and groom. So, they made a bad investment. We all know that. He's trying to recoup his money, tried to sell it, can't sell it. So, let's just shove some 79 families into a low-income housing on a road that he's trying to recoup the money. And that's where I said, "We gotta put a stop to this. Try to sell the property, whatever he's gotta do, and put this, this development, whatever he wants, downtown. And this is a downtown look. Go to Royal Oak, go to Birmingham, go wherever you want to go, that these things, these guys think that belongs, Tim and Tom, the builders. Put it downtown Grand Lake, it would look great. Not on a residential street." Thank you.
Mr. Ziska. Anyone else in the third row? This isn't a tiger game, by the way, we're not here to cheer when somebody scores, so. Anyone else? Anyone, I guess, anyone else on the left side that would like to address the planning commission?
Oh, I thought they said third row.
I'm sorry, I'm doing by sides. My left and my right. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Andrea Roat. I live at 8345 Oxford Lane. Firstly, I'd like to say thank you for all of you who do a hard job here, looking out for our community. But I'm here tonight to tell you that I am opposed to changing the status of zoning of single-family dwellings to a multifamily dwelling for the three parcels on McCandish Road. This development would directly negatively affect me. I live further down the road from where this has been proposed. I have lived in this community since 2001. At the time I moved in, this parcel of land was part of a golf course in the community. Due to changes in the economy, possibly poor business management, the longtime, once-vibrant golf course failed. As sad as I was to see the golf course go, I was not opposed to having beautiful, single-family homes developed there. These maintained the sense of community that I moved into. This pending request before the board to change the status of the property from single-family dwellings to have an apartment complex on that road housing 77 units will ruin our area. I do not want the enormous traffic dumping onto McCandish Road. If it remained single-family parcels, it would add maybe six to 10 vehicles. If you allow a 77-unit complex, that road will immediately have to handle at least 77 to 144 more vehicles. If this is successful, what would be to stop them from buying up the rest of the golf course and turning that into a mega apartment complex? This is a small, two-lane rural road. This high-density housing will create enormous traffic congestion, parking problems, and will directly affect the neighborhood stability. I do not want to see my property values fall, as always happens when large, multifamily complexes move into single-family areas. Everyone who goes to buy a home knows they do not want to live next to a large apartment complex directly next door to them. As a result, if you allow this, you will literally ruin all the communities further down McCandish Road. It will negatively affect the quality of my area and reduce my sense of safety for our community. I also do not want to see the huge influx of students that this will bring to our schools. Right now, our schools are very crowded. We, our scores have been dropping in math, science, and reading. And if we bring in all these additional students, I think it will increase the load on our teachers and continue to make it harder for our teachers to provide quality education for our children. In conclusion, please do not let them make this, the zoning change. Thank you very much.
Ms. Roat, for your comments.
I'm sorry.
Well, we're gonna run through everybody else first, see if we have time, sir. Anyone else on the left here?
Hi, my name is Marjorie Gerber. I live at 6162 McCandish Road, just down the road from the proposed development. I guess I am here just to voice my concern about having a multifamily unit on our street. The reasons I see are safety. Right now, when I walk or I bike on that street, as many as other people do, and it is, there is very little shoulder, the traffic that would increase with a multifamily home will directly impact the safety of those joggers, walkers, and the community that we are creating in our McCandish area. I hope the board will not grant this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Anyone else? No.
I'll go on record, you just want my name and you say what I don't want to hear.
That's fine, that's perfect. Yeah. No, that's fine.
I'm at 5334 McCandish Road. I've lived there almost 30 years, and it's very upsetting to me, like I said, the traffic is terrible. My lawn's won't even pull out into my driveway and pull out on the road anymore. Now they're perking on the burn, which worries me for them, the young guys, and there's so much traffic that's lovely. I'd like to hold on to that against it.
Thank you, Ms. Dads. To officially get on the record, the microphone is there because it is recorded, but we, we have a record that you're against it. Sir, yes. Yeah, if we can get you to come up to the microphone, it's probably better. That way, it goes on record, it's recorded.
I have someone's, oh, my name is Charles Vera. I live at 5348 McCandish Road, and, and probably at least a couple hours a day, it's hard for anyone to drive out of my driveway. And it's also extremely dangerous for anybody to pull out, you know, without going back in and turn around. I have them always go back into my driveway if they leave and turn around. But that place is not safe. Coming down that hill, I looked at it from over the hill till you hit somebody in my driveway, it might be 15, 14 seconds, you know, at 45 miles an hour. And at one time, before they did that, that was only 35 miles in the first portion of McCandish. And now, they turned it into 45 coming off of Saginaw Street. And if they go fast enough, they can be up to 45 miles an hour in front of my house. That, it's hard to get out of. It's hard to get out of. It's, uh, and other neighbors have thought about it, but I am mostly concerned about my young family, my young grandchildren, they come over, they have to manipulate that exit to get back on McCandish, and it's hazardous to them. Okay? That's what, that's what I feel about that. You know, and I see, and I, I mentioned this before a couple of times, and it's always been, that's the Grand Blank City, Grand Blank Township's business. But this is Genesee, it's in the Genesee, McCandish belongs to Genesee.
This is Grand Blank Township. Well, the road, you're talking about the road itself?
Yeah.
County Road Commission. County Road Commission has jurisdiction, yeah.
Thompson Road is...
Genesee County Road Commission has jurisdiction over the roads, the township does not. I don't know if that explains it or not.
Well, that's good. You guys got all the, you guys can bring everybody. Good, you got it down, Pat. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And we're, come on, let's, we're not at a sporting event, people. Anyone else on my left that wants to speak? All right.
Hi, I'm Cindy Wygoski. I don't live on McCandish, I live off of McCandish at 5044 Candlewood Drive. We live in a single-family, old residential subdivision. We have nowhere to walk other than in our subdivision. It's all big roads that if the kids want to ride their bike to school, if they want to go downtown, if anybody wants to go for a walk, you're going on a main road. If you're gonna put a big complex there and bring all this influx of traffic, that's just gonna make it more dangerous and more, whatever, make it so that it, that people are not gonna want to walk that way. They're gonna have more issues. That development, how far off of the road is the easement that they have, that they can bring that? What did they say, 18?
I...
18 feet? Okay, so...
No, I haven't seen a plan.
So, if it's off of the road, 18 feet for the, the building, and you approve it, and then you have that two-lane road out in the front of it, and you have all this traffic, well, to alleviate traffic, you're gonna widen the road. Are you gonna widen it on the 18 feet where that new residential complex is? No, you're gonna go to the other side where those single-family homes are on the opposite side of McCandish. It doesn't seem like that's a reasonable option for those folks that have lived there. So, that's my...
Comments, Ms. Wygoski. Oh, there's, still going back down, across back here.
Hi, my name is Pam Turk. I live at 5304 McCandish Road. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak, and I want to also reiterate a few things that have already been said about the significant traffic that is on McCandish Road. I moved to my condo, I'm, I'm one of the persons that live in the four-unit condo directly across from where this building will be, so it is very concerning. And again, it's extremely busy on McCandish Road. Anyone that visits me has to go out forward, you know, they cannot back out, they have to go out frontwards, or it's very dangerous. To even check my mailbox, I have to be very cautious. There's rarely a time I can make it to it without a car coming by, and I try to, I try to beat the cars if I can. Earlier this year, my garbage can blew across the street, like, happens with the windiness, and I, by the time I could get it, I couldn't even cross the street because I'd get home from work and it was too busy. So, it, it was too damaged anyways, but just a simple thing of crossing the street to obtain my garbage can was impossible. In my particular condo, there are two driveways that you can enter and exit from. If you, the, the one that's, I'm, if you face the street, I'm on the left side, the right-side driveway, it is extremely dangerous because there's a blind spot. I have an elderly woman that lives next to me, and it's, she said a couple of times she's just made it because of the hill in the road, you know, way down the road. So, again, add traffic to this, we have more challenges. And again, there's noise, there's many features that I'm very concerned about. But I guess the biggest thing I ask every single person who's involved in this decision, please take time to drive on McCandish, stop at the property, stop at the condo, sit in the driveway, kind of process in your mind, okay, how would I feel if I lived here, if I lived in this home, and I looked out and I saw that increased traffic, if there, you know, again, visually, I'm very fortunate to look at Greenery now, that will not be there anymore directly across the street from my condo I just bought three years ago. So, again, please put yourselves in the shoes of all of us when you make this decision. So again, please put yourselves in the shoes of all of us when you make this decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Your comments, appreciate it. Anybody else on the left side? You know what I'm going to do, I'm going to continue across the back. Anybody in the back aisle? Then we'll start moving forward. Anyone in whatever it is, about the fourth row, would like to address the planning commission? Third row? We're getting closer.
Hello, thank you for letting us speak our concerns. Like many of the people, okay, Barbara Baumgartner, 5101 Briar Ridge Court. I've lived there for 30 years. And McCandlish Road has gotten harder and harder to get out on. That is one of the exits from our neighborhood off from Apple Way. And one other point is, in the winter, you can sit there forever when the roads are bad with the traffic, too. So that's another consideration I'd like taken. And a question for the board, according to the July 8 meeting, the developer or his representative was supposed to meet with the zoning commission after that meeting about a variance, there's supposed to be a 50% setback variance between the buildings that he's proposing building. Does anyone know if that meeting took place yet, and if there's any minutes from it?
I remember we don't answer questions, but I'm going to address this one. The meeting, the variance board meeting did take place, and they did not get approval of the variance that they requested. They showed, or I think they have various options that they're looking at, the one that they wanted the most, they needed a variance for, and that was not granted, from my understanding.
Okay, thank you. And then one other thing regarding the property and the concern that the person who owns it can't sell it. I would like to bring attention to the one on Warwick Hills that was for sale forever and ever, that's right off from Saginaw Road. They recently built a ginormous home there that was recently sold. So I really feel that if he, the owner feels that he has no other choice than to resort to multiple zoning to sell that property, he needs to look no further than the property in Warwick Hills, which is right off Saginaw Road, which would actually be a less desirable property than the one on McCandlish Road for a single-family home. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Baumgartner. All right, so we are in row three. Anybody else in row three? Row two? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jay Kamaredi, and we live on 8426 Warwick Groves Court, and that's a subdivision off McCandlish. And I share the same concerns that all the folks have previously have shared with you, so I'm not going to repeat myself on that. But I'd like to go on record saying that I'm opposed to this development. I guess, I have a question regarding the process for informing residents of Grand Blank Township or those concerned residents around the, about the upcoming meeting. How do we get to know when these meetings happen? Because we just heard through grapevine, through emails, and showed up here, and then we were told that the meeting is canceled, and I had so many things planned this evening, so I know this is not, you're busy people.
Official notification through the mail, correct? 300 feet.
So it's only 300?
300 feet?
Whoa, whoa, come on, let's, nice.
So, so I guess that's the concern I have, is if it's only 300 feet, but...
It was in the newspaper. In fact, I got my Grand Blank view today, and there's all kinds of...
Mr. Anderson.
Sorry, it, it, so it was in the Grand Blank view today? So if you didn't get it...
Not this particular one, but other elements, it's always posted in the media.
Okay, but then if, I guess the question is...
Newspaper and any residents within 300 feet of the property will get noticed, and I'm sure based on the good communication skills that I've seen here today, everyone will find out.
Well, I'm sure they'll find out, but we don't want to come here and, you know, find out that the meeting's been postponed. I guess that's my thing, because it's, like I said...
We never provided notice that the meeting was, it was kind of started on social media.
Oh, I see, so it wasn't an official, all right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Robert Stratman. I'm at 5308 McCandlish. I agree with everything that everyone said about the traffic patterns, it's horrendous. One thing no one's talked about is the increase in crime when you put a multifamily unit near you. Our police station is quite far, I mean, our police station's right here. We're at the other end of this township. I don't remember the last time I saw a township police officer down there. So is there a study to show how many more officers are going to be required to how, to protect us when you have a, which I would assume, a low-income multifamily housing unit that goes in there? So besides a traffic study, I think there needs to be a crime study, you know, not paid for by the residents, but paid for by the developer who wants to put this in. How is he going to protect us? Is he going to provide the security? Is he going to stop that, even the headlights, you know, or the light shed off of a multifamily unit? Anyone who lives near a taller building, the lights are going to come over any kind of berm that gets put in. Right now, there are no cars that exit off of McCandlish. As soon as this development gets put in, the cars will exit, the headlights will shine onto all of the homes across the street. That's not there right now, and it's just something you have to think about. But the most important thing was the crime. I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Anyone else on my right that would like to address the planning commission?
I am Gary Hankinson. I'm at 5407 Sutton Court. My wife and I, Suzanne Hankinson, would like to say a few words. First of all, I agree with everything that's been said so far, very concerned about all the same concerns. I have to say, this is about change, and if you have been around McCandlish Road, you know that McCandlish Road has changed. We've been here for over 30 years in a house in Village Green. I have to say, McCandlish Road is one of my favorite roads in Grand Blank Township, even with the changes over the last 30 years, where it was just one big field, and it was just one heck of a fun time to run with the dogs and do all kinds of things with their kids in the fields, play golf, all that kind of thing. I still love McCandlish Road. I love running on McCandlish Road. Occasionally, I ride my bike on McCandlish Road and take my life into my own hands by doing that, but it is still a great road. But this proposal will turn it into the worst road in Grand Blank Township because of all the things that have been said already. I like change, I like seeing things develop, I like the culture of Grand Blank Township, and I want to stay here, and I want to love it, and I want to continue to love McCandlish Road. But if you add this particular structure, it's going to do what has just been said, and it's going to change the culture of our community. And I don't want to change the culture, I want it to change, but I don't want to change the culture of our community in this particular area. I think it's got a lot of really good history and a lot of really good things going for it right now. Changing it would make it something very undesirable, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else?
This will be quick.
15 seconds.
15 seconds.
No problem on change, I lived across the street before, for 17 years in High Grove.
Excuse me, would you please repeat your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Ziska, 5415 McCandlish Road. And I know what, it changes, it affects people differently. For the first five years, when I moved in the back of High Grove, my neighbors that backed up to me in Warwick wouldn't talk. It's like they still expected the deer in the antelope to be playing in the backyard, you know, so I understand that. When I talked to the builders, proposed builders of this site, okay, I said, why don't they just do it tastefully? Put three, four, if you want to keep them single-family, like across, or single-story, like across the street, make them beautiful, you know? Keep the value. This guy is trying to shove these units down to make as much as possible, and I think what the builders forgot to do, or they slipped, was the fact that these are going to be rental units. I don't know if you guys know that or not, okay? These are going to be rental units that the, these doctors, the two doctors...
We haven't seen that.
Okay, you eventually will. Now, if this thing actually happened today...
It may not, who knows?
Right. If this thing happened today that it didn't get canceled, hopefully you guys are more prepared, that you guys are going to get more information on this. But these doctors, because of a bad investment, are trying to shove this stuff down. I wish, put those buildings right next to where they live. Go ahead, do it. It's not going to happen. We know that.
Thank you.
Okay?
All right, we're going to close, was there someone else?
I checked.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Susan Richards. I live at 8296 on Manchester. My husband and I bought our house a few years ago, and I chose that side of town because of the feel of the area. It has a very country feel. I could have easily chose from numerous houses in the city. I didn't want to live in the city. I didn't want to live on top of each other. Our sub is pretty well spread out, it's an older subdivision, I love it. The thing about traffic, yes, everybody here mentioned the traffic. It is valid, the traffic is traffic. Everything changes, everything grows in life, but a multi-unit complex does not fit in our area. It really, truly doesn't. And one of the concerns I have is that property there, once that goes, what happens to the property that's on Saginaw? Because it's listed for sale, I don't know about the zoning or anything like that, but does then that down the road get turned into an additional complex or strip mall or something along that lines? And then, say 10 years from now, long-term, because I still got a lot of life to live, and I don't plan on moving anytime soon, so what happens in 10 years when this, whoever the management company is, doesn't keep up like per se how the, whoever owns the Walmart, wherever that is, and the water's dry and it's nasty and there's garbage all over, is that what this complex is going to look like once the paint starts to fade? That's my, that's the, change is going to happen, houses will go, people will come and go, but long-term, is that really one I want to live next to? No, because if I did, I would have stayed in my old house. Thanks.
Your comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Sir, I'll, I listened to everybody speaking, I'm sorry, my name is Ahmad Nagib. I live on 5499 Territory Road in the Village Green subdivision, which is close to the intersection. I will speak about a different, completely different point, which is the value of the homes around the area. By me owning, me and my wife, owning a 36-unit apartment building in the city of Flint for the past 20-some years, and sadly, I used to listen to my neighbors of the apartment building that I owned, which was, I didn't build, but it was a fact already existing. So I used to listen to the neighbors that have been living there, that have been there for 40, 50 years, and they are reminiscing about the days before the apartment building was built, and how that affected their everyday life, and how that affected the value of their homes. Because as an owner of an apartment building, I know what it, what happens in the apartment building, atmosphere, a lot of problems, no matter how you control it, no matter how you try to do your best to keep everything under control, still, things get under control in terms of different tenants and stuff like that, but as well as the property, the property values. Everybody spoke about traffic, which is a great point, especially the adjacent lots or the adjacent houses close to the vicinity of the apartment assumed, you know, to be built, the values will drastically go down, or at least to a point will go down. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and thank you very much for your, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We're going to close the public comment section unless there's anyone else that I missed. All right, we'll close that. We're going to take about a five-minute break. If you'd like to leave, you're welcome to do so. If you want to stay, you can stay as well. But we don't have anything regarding this item on tonight's agenda. Give you an opportunity to leave if you'd like. We call the planning commission meeting back to order. Three, four, five, six, we're missing...
There he is. Bush.
All right. Next item on this evening's agenda is correspondence. I think the only thing that I have seen is planning and zoning news, in addition to many emails about the previous project that was discussed. Any other correspondence? Next item would be old business, I don't think we have any old business. New business, site plan review, King Steel Railroad spur. Do you have anyone that's making a presentation?
I can't get the presentation to, we can't get it to load up, unfortunately.
Connect to the projectors?
We've been, that's what we've been, yeah, so we're just going to, it's a, it's all, it's just a two-page letter, I think we can... We tried that, it wasn't...
The applicant here? I think the packet looks pretty self-explanatory to me, so I'm not going to...
Yeah, so, yeah. Full disclosure here, full transparency.
So, resume you're the applicant? No? Okay.
All right.
Making sure you're here.
Where's my interview?
Well, come on up to the front. Come on!
Well, as, yeah, I'd love to...
Please take seats in the front, and then, in the event there's questions, you can step to the...
I would love for someone to kind of just give us a little general review of what you want to do, and then we'll get into the details of...
Well, she says, I guess that's me.
My name is Jacey Hogan. I work for Rhodes &amp; Johnson Construction at 285 North Aloy in Fenton, Michigan. I am here kind of representing Kevin Johnson and then King Steel with Jimmy Cummings, Jr. So in regards to site plan review of extension of the railroad onto the property. Is that enough? Pretty simple.
What are you looking for the railroad spur to do? What's the reason behind adding this?
For unloading purposes.
Business has...
Mm-hmm, yep.
Need for that.
Yep.
You were going to go through, okay?
Yeah, I got a couple of highlights. So as they mentioned, they're looking to construct railroad trackage to serve their facility, King Steel. Railroad transfer and storage tracks, railroad rights of way and freight terminals are permitted uses in the I-1 district, which, in which the site is located. So there was a couple of notes, the surrounding uses are all, surrounding zoning is all industrial. There is a single-family home adjacent to the site, but it's owned by the applicants and it's on the same property. Looking at the site plan, it met all the dimensional requirements. We just had one note, really it was about the parking area, the parking lot in the front of the building. Per the ordinance, two spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, or 1.2 spaces per employee at peak shift, whichever is greater, is what's required. So if we go by the 76,000 square feet, that's over 153 parking spaces that this building would require. So we've actually added a note, based on their employees at peak shift, they would require about 23 is what they've estimated as their need. So that's summarized in number six there on the bottom of the first page. If we flip that over to 6A on the top of the second page, there is a parking lot deferment available to the applicant, which can be worked out between the attorney and the applicant, which would essentially allow them to propose a parking number, which they have, and that can be approved on the site plan. So we've noted, if the applicant wishes to pursue this approach, a written legal agreement, which has been approved by the township's attorney, to construct the deferred parking shall be provided by the applicant. So that's number six. Number seven, they were, did not show their minimum parking lot trees. In parking lot landscaping, they're required to have four trees, three within landscaped islands, so we would just ask that... landscaped islands, so we would just ask that that be added to the final site plan. And those are the only two elements that we, that we had comments on. They've provided their loading, and loading and unloading spaces. They've provided the easement language, and they've indicated no exterior lighting added to the site.
So, is this railroad spur being added in order to, I'm presuming, benefit your business, right? Will it increase your business?
It will actually-
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, would you please step to the podium and state your name?
That way, it's on the recorded record, just, just for-
Hi, I'm Doug King, CFO of King Steel Corporation on Holly Road. The question was the purpose of the rail spur. The rail spur will, what it'll do, it'll add the value to our business to allow us to add further processing plants. We have a big customer right across the street, Shinsho Industries, and they currently are bringing in 4,000 ton a month of steel by truck from Philadelphia, and they're wanting to do it by rail, because the trucking industry is, is tough. They can't get enough trucks. So, we saw this as an opportunity to get a letter of commitment from them, which we had, to unload, to transload their material, and then we could add further manufacturing to, we've got a total of 30 acres, that we could add more plants right in there that would benefit from rail delivery.
For your current business, will you be hiring additional people for this business?
Well, for the current expansion right now in the railroad, we would bring three more people in, all right, for right now, but then let's say that goes to a processing plant, where we now bring in material and process it, that could add more people, but that's not, that's in the long-term.
So, what's your, I didn't catch it, if you covered that, the maximum number of employees per shift?
Right now, the maximum number, I forget what number we had.
You provided us, then, said it was 18 employees.
18?
Would be 18. It's currently from 12 to 15, so adding three would bring it to 18.
And we've got a bank of eight saws, where one man will run two saws. We've got another piece of equipment that does saws bars, we're mainly in steel bar processing. So, we got that, plus we got our shipping and receiving, and then we've got our, we got our office personnel. We've got one office personnel there.
How much overlap, or do you run more than one shift?
We were running three shifts, then it went down to two, and the chip shortage got us now, so now we're down to one. So, we're trying to get that built back up again.
Assuming that goes back, how much of an overlap is there in shifts?
Uh-
Separate, to be-
Well, they worked, they would work three eight-hour shifts, so there would be two overlaps on each end of each eight-hour shift.
I'm just trying to figure out, from a number of parking spaces, what would be the maximum peak? You have people that are still on first shift, when second shift shows up?
No, they would have left. They would, they would have been going like five minutes. They get the five-minute area, so they would have been going before the next shift theoretically shows up. Occasionally, you have some people who work overtime, this sort of thing, so that would take, take that, so, but basically, they're like, they're like going before they get there.
So, from a number of parking spaces you currently have-
What did we show, total parking spaces?
The total parking spaces, right now, you have 23.
Okay.
Let's-
A little bit more than that, didn't we? Did we add?
23 existing and 43 proposed, I think.
I guess it's somewhere between 23 and 38. It's, they're, it's just based on the way it's striped, I guess.
Right, right, exactly.
So, you don't see, you don't foresee a problem with-
No, if we have, just by adding a couple of people right now, if we haven't had a problem, we're not going to have one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. One for you. Has they been the site plan review?
No.
And is this required?
Well, this is site plan review tonight.
Okay, so you're not having-
No.
Okay. The second thing is the parking. I know it says it needs parking, but it's an existing facility that was approved with X amount of parking, how long ago? I mean, how long have you been in operation? Quite, quite a while. I mean, you've been in our community for a long time.
It used to be the old Hall Steel building.
Right, right, so, so my question is, then, if the railroad spur doesn't generate parking, they're not building any additional building, why are we asking for additional parking? And, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Assuming it's going to make them more efficient, right?
Well, I mean, if they do a building addition, I can see additional parking, but I mean, they've been functioning for 30 years with what they got, and, and we're telling them they need more parking?
It is a change, so.
So, the, yeah, when the, the site plan comes in, we review it against the ordinance. There was, they were actually in in 2017, and had a, an approval at that point, and that's where we got the 38 spaces for. So, this is sort of just making sure that they're keeping all the written legal agreements. So, the, the parking lot deferment, actually in that agreement, it would say if there was ever a parking issue, where there were people parking on the grass, or neighbors had an issue, they would then be legally required to build additional parking. Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, but what I don't get is, it's already a pre-existing building, approved with parking, and they're not changing it. That's my only question.
I think it's just required, we make note of it.
That's, that's what your ordinance, what the ordinance requires, yeah.
Yeah, but it would have been required in 2017, and it's not there.
And that was granted then.
We did look at parking in 2017, and we talked about the number of employees that were present then, and so just as part of the due course of doing the review, we see the expansion of rail spur.
Right.
Ask the question, are you more pleased?
Okay.
If it wasn't, if that wasn't a requirement of this type of use-
Right.
That wouldn't matter.
So, the deferment's the answer, then, is what you're saying?
This type of requirement is based on either the spur included or the number of employees.
Okay, okay.
So, we'd have to ask, are you-
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Well, and it also indicates that if the planning commission finds that the required parking is excessive, then we can approve a smaller parking area, right?
I, to speak to that, I'm familiar, and I did drive by today, I'm going from work, plenty of open spots. There's not an issue.
And I just recall in 2017, we talked about the potential of the ordinance, that specific parking area that is excessive.
Right.
Anyone else, Mr. Yacho?
Yes, I'm not quite sure I got it correct. Please correct me. It's only going to be for freight in, not freight out?
Yeah, for right now, it'll come in on rail cars and ship out on trucks. So, we have basically freight in right now, freight in and trucks in, for right now.
There's no reason it can't be freight out, though.
Oh, no, no, none whatsoever.
And is it exclusively for King Steel? Or, I mean, there's a lot of heavy industry in the area-
I know.
-that can benefit, you know?
Now, you're getting to the point.
It can benefit our roads.
It'd benefit Grand Blanc Township.
By keeping trucks off our roads.
Absolutely. So, one thing that's missing, I mean, where we're located in that Baldwin North Holly Road area, we've got a good electrical grid, we've got good highway interstate access. The DDA is doing a lot to improve the roads, to get trucks in and out. The one thing we don't have is someplace for rail siding to come in, and when Lake State Railroad came in and did the shortline railroad and bought it from CSX, or leased it from CSX, that opened up the ballgame, is where we now, they'll cooperate and then work with a small operation like ourselves, like loading and unloading rail cars.
So, this will be very convenient for you.
Absolutely.
It'll also be, I think, an attraction to other businesses on the vacancies.
Yeah, I agree. I, I've discussed with a few people in the township that, and they, and they were not aware that there is an existing spur at the old Wick's lumberyard. The, the, the road bed is there, but not ties or tracks.
Right.
So, but that wouldn't be as convenient as having one in your own backyard.
Yeah, especially if we wanted to do further processing. We've got, just around the corner, around the lake, we've got Acumenet, who brings steel in by truck, who we would go with. We've got Shinsho right across the street. Right across the railroad track is Shinsho, who brings in steel. So, there's a lot of business that could be added by bringing this in, and which could attract further processing down the road, so.
So, without the lights, you know, you're limited to just daytime loading and unloading, right?
Right.
Do you see where the opportunity might exist that you would want lights there in the future?
Well, you never know. In my, before I moved up here, I had a steel company did the same thing in Ferndale, Michigan. We had the yard, we built, we did pretty much the same thing, and we never really needed night unloading. You got enough light, daylight hours, you can get it done and get it loaded out.
Um, that's, that's great. I thank you for answering those questions. While I'm on the floor, though, for, this is possibly for the engineering company, on the page two of the ROW response, it says routing drainage, route drainage to proposed detention-retention basin, and I can't find on the plans where there's an additional or a new retention basin.
No, well, yes, I didn't print it at all.
All the numbers.
Is, will there be a new?
There's 40 new sheets. I didn't print them all.
Got those from Maria?
Yes.
Are there any changes proposed to detention?
I would have to defer to engineering on that.
I guess.
Planner.
And the email that we received this morning from Maria, I, I downloaded the literature. I did not download the 40-page site plan review documentation, and I, I think the concerns that were in the ROW report were taken care of in this report, although I didn't see the plans themselves. It does say that it references every sheet.
I, I think any motion, we need to reference the, that the ROW engineering report is addressed, and part of it is normally we get that as part of our, our package.
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, we've got the, the ROW initial letter, but we really didn't get a chance to kind of go through and compare line by line. It just came in today, but just to make sure that they're happy that everything's been addressed, is I guess what we want to make.
Yes, everything.
The other question I've got is in regard to, there was in here regarding adding a few trees in the parking lot. You have any issue with doing that?
No.
Anyone else in the planning commission?
I believe what we're talking about here is the second page of the ROW thing, site sheet 4 of 4 plan view. Is that what you refer into? The drainage? The letter from ROW, right there.
Yes, the page, on page two.
Okay. I, I've, I've read it a couple of times, and I think the second time I've read it, it kind of makes more sense. It looks like they're providing underground 12-inch diameter slotted drainage tube. Nothing open, nothing, nothing exposed to existing structure. They're not adding any detention ponds.
There is an area, even on site, that's a small, you know, area.
Yeah, the north side of the property, that's-
And then there's right on the, right at the, on the, on the-
Oh.
Does drain though, on that.
Okay, I see. Yep. Oh, which are existing drain right there, and there's a little tensionary kind of just on the east side of that. Okay, okay, so, yeah, there, it's there. It's difficult to see in the map, and I missed that the first time.
I see that.
I think that it, for me, I mean, that, that did clear that question up.
Thanks. Are you going to demo the house on the property you own there?
That was the original plan, but then we had somebody that wanted to rent it, but worked at the plant next door, so. In the long run, yeah, that, that house would be yours.
It, it, you know, if somebody's living there, I mean, that's, that's fantastic.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah.
You can walk to work.
Well, it's some, it's security, too.
Yeah.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
That's very good.
Okay, well.
Any other comments from township departments that we may have got? Nothing?
Need to approve this tonight? I'll make the motion that we approve.
Hold on.
Still writing.
Still writing, okay.
What I'm, what I'm doing is listing conditions here, just to make sure we got everything covered. We would want, want the applicant comply with the township engineer requirements, and also- Township engineer requirements stated in his July 29th letter, and then, site plan review, Giffords Webster dated 7/27.
Just correspondence that we got-
7/30.
Should be incorporated, dated August 4th.
July 30.
That states-
Should be 6/30, just to correct your-
Couple of things that they're going to-
Date on that.
I'm sorry?
6/30, not 7/30, the, the date you gave was-
You said, you said the 27th, it should be the 30th.
July 30th.
On which, which letter do you tie them?
Planning letter should be dated July 30th.
Your comments, or writing your notes, rather. This one says 7/27, right there.
Does the plan date? The top, top left.
It's the date on the-
Ah, okay. There you go.
All right. Plan date, thank you. So, we have township engineer requirements identified as July 29th letter, August 4th response from the applicant. In that, Giffords Webster, planning, site plan review letter dated July 30th. Anything else we need to include in our motion? All right, Mr. Anderson, I believe you wanted to make a-
Okay. Let me know if I'm going to miss something here. I'm going to say we make a motion to approve site plan review number 1082, King Steel Railroad spur, pending the applicant follows through on the requirements of the township engineer letter dated July 20th, 2020.
Support.
Want to add the other dates to official? I want to add the August 4th, 2021 letter. It looks like by the applicant that states they're going to do some revisions to the plan. That was, that was the one we got today. I just want to make sure that's in there.
I'll agree to that condition.
You've got Giffords Webster, the requirements in Giffords Webster, which letter, which is primarily item six and seven.
Yes.
Right, so we had a motion by Mr. Anderson to approve the site plan. Mr. Bush supports that. Any other discussion? Not. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll forward.
Yeah.
I know.
It's always what the rumor wheel of social media can do, that nothing that was said tonight was fact.
I mean, no reports, right? It was interesting when I went out there to close the doors, too, some comments I got about our attitude, so.
Nice.
I thought I smiled.
Thank you for your leadership. Thought we held it together, huh?
Dan, Dan stopped me here. I was getting ready to wind up.
All right, congratulations, and bring us some more business to Grand Blanc Township. Appreciate that. Great.
Okay, we're going to move on. You're free to leave if you would like, or you're free to stay.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Tell Kevin, next time, he's got to come himself.
Oh, I know. I told him the news was here and everything.
Tell him I said hello.
I will.
Thanks. All right, next item would be committee reports, township board. Sarah Hugo is not here, planning and zoning. Jeremy's not here. I didn't know if there's anything from Giffords Webster. Webster. Zoning Board of Appeals would normally be Jeremy as well, I guess. Nothing there?
I was, I went to them, I was at the meeting.
Okay.
If you want to report, basically, it was on the condos.
Yeah.
Uh, they, the, the recommendation by this body was plan two, if you remember, with the four-foot offset, the Zoning Board of Appeals. I tried my best to tell them this is what this board wanted, and they said no anyway. So, I mean, that's their flavor. I kind of walked out thinking they stepped on our toes a little bit. I sensed, after that, I spoke with Jeremy, I spoke with township supervisor, just to find out procedurally if that was the proper way to go about things, because we shouldn't be stepping on each other's toes. So hopefully in the future, that doesn't happen.
It was a little different order than what we've normally seen.
I, I just thought that was, you know, I, I pleaded my case with them and said, look, the planning commission wants more green space, and they didn't want to hear it.
And then the next item would be site plan review. We haven't seen anything in the last month, so... Motion for a deferment would be in there, unless you have something else.
Yeah. I'd like to pick everybody's brain to see if there's something that we can do to educate the public. I know it's been, you know, it's, but it's an ongoing problem that people post on public media. It's going to happen again, and I'd like to be able to put together some form of brief response or an outline of how the planning commission works or how, you know, and, and who has authority, whether it's the township board or whether it's the planning commission. And who, and, and the fact that we don't go out and solicit any type of building or construction or zoning. Anybody have any ideas?
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
I was just going to make a comment, and I know a lot of people sitting on this board have been in Grand Blank Township, served Grand Blank Township for a long time, myself included. I've attended many meetings and sat at this table a lot, and for the most part, nobody comes to our meetings. We're here alone, we make decisions based on what we feel's best with the applicant. There might be one or two people in the audience, but unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast, and it's not just our board, it's every board. And we all seen it, because we've all been here a long time. And so I, 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 I agree with Mr. Yacho. I don't know what the answer is. I, I, for one, was ready to respond to the email, and my wife yanked my ears, said, no, 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 and I didn't, and I'm glad I didn't. Because you're just going to get back and forth in a banter match, because there's so much misinformation, and we know what's right, but then if we write what's right, how do they know we're saying what's right?
They're going to accuse us of lying, even if we tell the truth.
So I choose to, to ignore them, and we'll address the issues there. So ignorance is bliss, I guess, right?
Well, that would be true, they'd all be happy. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Withdraw that from them.
They're not going to be happy when the R1 goes behind Larry. When the R1 goes behind the million-dollar house, they're not going to be happy.
Um, Mike...
They're not going to be happy.
I agree. There's no one decision's going to please everybody, period.
No matter what we do on that piece of property there, we'll not...
Or with any community, not just going to any community.
But I would agree with Mr. Yacho. Back a few years ago, township put together a process on coming to the township and getting contracts and so, and how you apply and so forth, which was a kind of a, a condensed form. And after that, I, I steered people to that, and I got very favorable comments on how that, it made it a lot easier to work with a township. So, so there should be something we can put together, and if nothing else, it's, it's, it's there, you know, we have it at, you know, and we can put it out there, it's available. Now, I don't read, one woman, you know, I don't read the Grand Blank News, well, I'm sorry, but that's part of the process. And if we help explain the process, that may help. I mean, if you're not within the 300 feet, you know, radius, you're not going to be happy, but nonetheless, I think given tonight, so we're not looked all as bad guys and gals, you know, we at least, we should make an attempt to try to simplify that. And, excuse me, just to finish, Larry and I talked with this one gal about the variance, you know, and, well, is this, is that this board? Why?
Right.
Well, you know, you guys are opposed or opposing each other, what? So there's a lot of misinformation. Information's out there, if, you know, we say go to the website, but if you go to the website and travel that, it's not that simple for people that aren't highly educated, in my opinion.
They're educated if you're not familiar.
Well, I would say not educated in the...
Yeah.
How the township...
Well, familiar.
Yeah, familiarity, yeah.
When I left my, my last term on the board, and I, I didn't, I haven't been here in years after I got off the board, but you know what? I've lived in this town my entire life, and I, on the website twice for the last five, six, seven years, I go there.
Most residents, huh?
Because I care about my community.
Most residents.
I, I agree 100% with what Vince is saying, but you know what? There's a website. Use it. It's 2021.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we, we're hiding anything.
I just wanted to follow up on your remark. I really think we should stress and encourage people to go to the website if they want, you know, information and answers about issue, you know, what's happening in the township, or if they have questions, call the township, you know? Maybe even put a Q and A section on the website or something about, you know, with the most frequently questions that people have, you know, which the staff would certainly be able to probably give us some input.
Yeah.
You know, what's, what's, what's the most typical complaints, questions, comments, and a Q and A kind of thing?
I get hit with residents that buy a house and then call me or say, well, how come they're going to put that across the street? Well, it's zoned commercial, and these people had no idea. Well, that's because you didn't bother looking before you bought your house. I mean, I, I don't, I, this might sound harsh, but I guess if you're not going to do your due diligence before you spend $300,000, I guess that's your own fault.
There's a lot, there's a lot that's happened the last year and a half that people are not happy with, and they're looking for somebody to be mad at, so hey, you got to take it, right?
So it's us.
Yeah.
If we take a step forward, you know, at least we've done something, kind of responding to that.
I agree.
You know, to, to what they said.
Yeah, I mean, when I went back out there to close the door, how come you canceled the meeting? We didn't cancel any, and it wasn't, there wasn't any notice given in the first place.
I want to speak to that real quick, if I can. There was one particular person that just commented multiple times on a page that I run about this proposed development, urging all the residents to come speak, blah, 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 talking about this, and mentioning tonight's meeting, tonight's date, tonight's time. And while this conversation was going on, I just kind of did double check. Every single one of that person's comments have been deleted. The entire post is gone. Like, they realized, oops, it's not tonight, right? But it was, the can of worms has already been opened, if you will, so...
I posted on that, on that page that there was not a meeting, that it wasn't scheduled, and I told people how to get the correct information to go to the back page, to the classifieds and the news, or, or go to the proper Facebook page, or go to the township website. I told them, I gave them the links to the township website, so all they'd have to do is click on it, and they could see what the agenda was.
You know, and if they don't think...
They don't do that.
People don't think we care. I think I watched everybody make a page of notes tonight, guys. Everybody, not, not just one of us.
I will take a motion to adjourn at 8:31 PM.
One, one last question, Mr. Chairman, before you make that emotion, depriving me of that, but nonetheless, when do we put the sign out when a piece of property is being rezoned or being proposed to be rezoned?
When there's an application.
Okay. So we have yet to receive that application. Okay, so I mean, that's another...
We were denied their variance until we got the deal, so we have to...
Yeah. So that's another thing for us to say, you know, when it's going, when there's a proposal to rezone, it's posted. So it's not like it's hidden someplace, it's posted. And yes, people within 300 feet, which they don't like that distance, but nonetheless, where do you draw the line? 500, 1,000, 2,000?
It's 300 standard.
Standard.
Yes.
I believe that, yeah, that is state law, correct.
Yeah, but then I think if we just tell them, when it's going to, when it's going to be proposed for rezoning, it's posted right there. So everybody that drove, or that will drive up and down McCandless Road, they will see that posting. So I, I come back to due diligence.
A minimum of 15 days posted, and it can be no more than 30, so there's a nice window there, a minimum and a maximum.
You know, guys, that piece of property out front, it's zoned commercial. Wait till that one goes, and somebody's going to buy it and build.
Are you just now a clubhouse? You're talking about on Saginaw Road there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's going to go.
Right on Saginaw.
Open a gas station.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you made a motion?
8:32 PM. Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay with you...
Yes, sir.
To adjourn the meeting at 8:33 PM.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky, support by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.